I call any order for a lot of objection to discussing the electrications and education. The name of objection. So this is the event, Jay Smith, we're going to move forward and give your full name and your address.
Good evening, I'm Jay Smoot, 101 Chaveno Drive, Chaveno Park, Texas, 78231. I am for all matters that uphold the core survey results. I hope that you will support what the majority of Chaveno Park citizens said they want in that core survey. I don't really, so that being said, you can imagine the items that I do not support on this agenda for the budget. And I have a matter of great concern to me, that probably everyone in this room knows about, but if you do not, I would like it to be considered for a future budget item. And that is, as far as an electrical water project that I am for of sorts, I am asking you to bring this building up to code for fire safety prevention. As you all probably know, we do not have a fire prevention water sprinkler system. If you look up, there's nothing going to stop a fire here, and our employees have no protection. So I would really like to see that, the safety of our employees, citizens, and visitors to be put on the front burner on future budget items. I realize it's probably not a matter that can be done this quickly, but I do think that putting that in the forefront is more important than some of the other luxuries that we may entertain going forward. So again, I am for the core survey, which the majority of the residents said, "Leave the municipal track alone." I understand we had to repair the well, but I would really like that to be sealed up and back the way it was. And as a member of the tree committee, I see a lot of trees being clear cut, and the tree committee is not involved at all. I would really like the tree committee to be more involved in documentation and research on trees that are being removed, but primarily on keeping trees, heritage oaks and such as that, that would beautify Chaveno Park and keep the park, in the park. And I do believe that that is where the value of the land came from, in Chaveno Park, and that was the beauty of us keeping our environment as it was in the natural state. So again, I am asking you to research and have this building brought up to code as far as a fire sprinkler prevention system, and maybe that is something more worthy, safety of the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Without objection, I will include in the record emails from Dick Zucker, Sean Fitzpatrick, Henry Green, Todd Brodrick, Karen Litko, Mark Jackson, Anne Marie Marquette. There are two additional ones that should be in this packet, from Tommy Payton and from Cassie. They went to you, Bill.
And I just sent one from Carrie Lacoste.
I did receive emails from those people. I passed all the emails I received to the city secretary.
Okay.
We're copying.
I did not see those two in there.
We'll be writing them down, I'll make copies for you.
Okay.
I just sent you another one.
Okay. Without objection? Okay, they will be included in the record. Item 5.1, discussion of the municipal budget. Bill?
Proposed.
Of the proposed budget.
Okay, so again, we've had a number of presentations, workshops, city manager proposed budget, your council voted on proposed tax rate by consensus. We've kind of achieved that. We've gone through a number of issues associated with that. We held the last budget workshop on the 22nd of August. Coming out of that workshop, there were a number of items mostly proposed by Alderman Colmier, which were briefed upon, but then there wasn't, you know, consensus or resolution that was agreed upon at the conclusion of that meeting that we readdressed this at this, after the city council meeting in a workshop environment, and that specifically costs associated with that would be kind of confirmed. So again, just to review the bidding there, I'll just kind of go over them item by item quickly, and then we can, we can go from there, and then you can have discussion. But there was a question of a shaded fuel break. Staff followed up with the Texas Forest Service. And my discussion with them at that time would be that if, upon council approval of the shaded fuel break, Texas Forest Service will submit a grant to fund the project, and they expected no issue associated with that. No additional funds from the city would be required. Texas Forest Service would provide up to 10 persons to cut, and would be looking for approximately the same number of staff and volunteers to help drag and to chip. That number, 10, isn't, would be, is just a top end number, would be based upon what the requirement was, and a walkthrough assessment to determine the scope, and then we'd follow from there. So again, exact location of the shaded fuel break would be determined by a site visit. So to answer your question, if you approve that, then there's no additional cost to the city. I followed up on the chainsaw class, and my research indicated that this class was primarily focused in training for firefighters to go address wildland firefighting actions. The training is excellent training, but at the conclusion of this, which is quite a few days, you're supposed to, to get, to gain your certification, you're supposed to cut down and demonstrate a number of different trees and large trees, which we would not propose doing. We don't really have any large trees that need to be cut down that would meet the requirements associated with this. My coordination with the fire chief would indicate that he didn't think there would be significant interest within the firefighters to do this, and that probably a lot of volunteers wouldn't volunteer to do that, associated with that. So I didn't sense that there was a lot of push for this from council last time, but I'm following up on that. It was something that Alderman Colmier had been offered, and he was, I think, broaching the subject as far as that goes. The water feature, frankly, we didn't do a lot of research for the exact requirements and cost. A water feature like that would not cost a lot in terms of, of the physical material associated with that, then depending upon how you wanted to actually exercise it, it could become more costly if you, for example, you wanted to use a trencher and trench. We know that out in this area here, there's a lot of rock, and then that would significantly increase the cost in terms of renting that and public works. But I didn't, again, I didn't do a lot of research on that because it didn't seem like that that was something that was embraced by council at the last time, but it's certainly something we can do in the future if we want to do that, and we still have time to do that. Increased electrical capacity at City Hall. I did have a meeting with Public Works Director and Billy Rhodes, who typically is our subject matter expert, and electrician who does small jobs. Something like this would have to be, a task order would bid out, but I asked him to walk through the property and just kind of visualize what would happen and where the electrical source might be, et cetera. And I did have a photo associated with that, and I think that's the next photo. I'm going to skip through some of these just to show you. Yep, back one. And I'll just point out here that our current electricity comes in behind the police building, and then moving the electricity here would probably be problematic. His recommendation was to come down here with, you'd have a line that would come down here, would probably be a two or three foot electrical, it wouldn't be a telephone pole, but it'd be a metal panel. You would trench underneath here, and then from there, you could trench around to right here, probably right, that X probably should be right here, but it could be here, to be determined. Going underneath in order to get power here, and this X isn't meant to be the only place, but you could trench through, through the road here, come through the garden, either to here and/or to here. As you know, we typically have an array of requirements that need electricity, starting from this X, basically going to that X, and so that was his option. He basically said that, talking to the Public Works Director, about $2,000 to rent the equipment, trench, and asphalt repair, and $8,000, what you really thought was less for the electrical line, but again, that was his guess. If that's your guidance to do this, we would put out a bid proposal for that, there would, I mean, a bid request for that, request proposal. We would get the, the minimum number of bids, three, and then we would, we would go from there. But $10,000 was estimated to be tracking from there. We briefed you last time that the municipal track capital replacement fund has a current balance of about $26,000 into that. Part of the discussion was that whatever the cost was associated with these improvements might, if that was approved, the remaining money could be redistributed through the capital replacement fund or something else. So that kind of outlines that. I did have a meeting, which I sent everyone an email out, on environmental friendly parking. That was an objective last year to consider, and then it's last year it was to implement. Staff really hadn't had, taken any action to do that, but because I attended a presentation by the San Antonio River Authority in which they demonstrated an environmental friendly parking lot that Leon Valley had done, I thought it was a good idea to get them to assess our piece. I've included that in your packet. I don't know if you want me to pause in that. I can go over the details now, or I can go over later. I'll just go with, based upon your guidance there. The last item, just to summarize, is that council gave us guidance to project collection of 100% of our Advaloren taxes. We did that, and then based upon the other guidances and adjustments that were made in the budget, that leaves a remaining amount of almost $25,000. The council can consider lowering, lowering the amount of fund balance to be used for capital replacement fund or some other budget use. That summarizes, in general, kind of where we left out, some of the discussion topics. And the only thing I didn't cover was any details on the environmental friendly parking, and I can, I can wait till later or do it now.
Okay. Well, let's, let's kind of go through this. We'll come back to the turning money over to the municipal track at the end after we have just considered the cost, and then we can consider the property tax item finally. The shaded fuel break. Mike, I'm going to turn this and let you speak first because this was your proposal.
Well, basically, it's the same as we talked about last week. I mean, it's, I, this is 100% and totally my idea. I, I've always thought that the municipal track was a piece of property that, that needed to be cleaned up. I think there's a lot of dead wood in there, a lot of broken trees, fallen trees and timber, and the junipers are crawling up into the oak trees. I've, I've seen a number of really nice foundation oak trees in there. They're getting choked out by those, those trees. Now, I'm not saying we do anything like that, as far as a total fire-wise. I'm not recommending that here. I'm not even thinking about it. I'm just saying that as I walk through it, I think it's, it's a fire hazard. I believe that. I, I don't know how else to say it. I think it's a fire hazard. I understand that as the Chief Naughton told us that his fear is more along Days of Allah, I agree. That's probably, if there is going to be a fire, that would be where it would be. But it's also ugly. It is not attractive. It may be semi-natural, but it's not truly natural, because if it was natural and prairie land, there would have been a fire in there sooner or later that would have brought all that, those trees down. Now, I remember many years ago, back in the 90s, when I had a friend that lived in woods of Chaveno, I used to come by here, and the track was a whole lot less overgrown. I mean, it looked like there was pasture land in there. And then the junipers got in there, and they've taken over. Those, their cedar trees is what they are. And they, they choked out the light. You can look at it as you drive along Days of Allah, there's no light in there, no natural light, no grasses are growing, no forage plants are growing, and, you know, but that's, that's something for, for other councils. I'm not proposing it. I think it's a fire hazard, and that's why I proposed it. As stated, the chainsaw class was something that was offered to me, and I said, "Well, I will pitch it," and it's up to the staff to decide. I didn't think it was going to be something that we were really going to be looking at, especially after I started to get into it and read what was involved, and that's really up to staff. I've left it up to them. The water feature, I think if we're going to have a, a track that we're trying to encourage for animals, why not put a water feature on it? Why not give them a source of water? What can that hurt? Is it going to be a little bit of a maintenance headache for somebody down the road? Well, you know, if you want, I'll come and clean the leaves out of it. You know, there's volunteers who will do it, but I don't think it's going to be that big a deal if we keep it to where it flows. If we keep it to where the water flows over, it's going to be, it's going to be relatively, it's going to be certainly as clean as anything that they drink out of, in rusty, you know, tubs and stuff like that. You know, there's, there's clearings in there and clear spaces. You can put it along there. We can put it to where there are no leaves that are going to get in there. I just don't think it's that big a hazard. The electrical, I think, is something we've needed to do because there's, the electrical is really funky out there. We have to turn the lights on to use half the electrical out there. And I just don't think that's a good idea. Now, I don't know how that was addressed here, and I've left all that up to the staff to decide. As far as returning any money back to the, to the, to the general fund, I mean, I, I can go either way. I mean, if we're going to have excess money, I'd rather have it have a purpose. The environmentally friendly parking, I know we need that out there. I know it's been talked. I know there was a, a talk of a, of a grant from San Antonio River Authority or something, wasn't it? I don't remember.
Yeah. There was a discussion as to whether that would be feasible, and in your packet, what they basically said was this site was not a good candidate for that.
Right.
You really needed impervious cover, and that the grant would be something that would take impervious cover and, and make it permitable, or collect it and then facilitate that, but anyway.
Well, so that was, that wasn't part of my proposal. I mean, that was added in by other council members, and not, that's fine with me. As far as the core survey goes, I know everybody wants to stand on that like it's the gospel in the Bible, but let's remember and call the facts here. 1,207 surveys were sent out, and I think 418 were returned. 205 of those said they didn't want anything, or didn't want very much done with the municipal track. That's the way I read it. There was, I think, 145 that said, "Let's do something," and 69 said they were willing to look at options, drainage, all kinds of things. People are saying that's a majority of the citizens. It wasn't even a majority of the survey. And the 72% that are likely to not want, or not want much on the municipal track, that extrapolation from the data, I think that was probably created by the same sage wisdom and, and pollsters that said for weeks, days, and hours up to the presidential election that Donald Trump had no path to the White House. So I don't buy that. I, I don't think we can hold on to that. If we want to have a survey, then we need to have a survey that is clean and doesn't have, ask questions like, "What political party do you belong to? What charities do you want to donate to?" And all that. When I say the survey was invalid, that's why it's invalid. And I stand on this. I know that it is a very sensitive subject, and as I just told Mary Ann, I said, "Well, if the, if the people who oppose me on this want to hang me in effigy, I, I hope they put me in a Caribbean or Hawaiian shirt." And I guess that's my result.
Okay, thank you. Mary Ann, you have some comments?
I'm just listening.
Okay. Bob?
Well, one of the things I said in the workshop last week, which apparently got muted or not recorded very well, was, and I'll, I'll say it again because I think it is very relevant here, is that when we talk about the municipal track, it's not just the piece of land that, that seems to catch a lot of the, a lot of the sensitive comments that we've been hearing the last couple of years. Municipal track includes all the building, includes the front part, the parking lot, the garden that we have in front that the Women's Club has done a wonderful job with, the fire-wise piece that we just did recently. It's the, it covers the entire tract, okay? But I think it has been very easy to say, "Don't mess with the municipal track." Well, we're talking about things here that include both the front part of the municipal track, as well as the land that's in the back. If we didn't do anything to beauti, to beautify the municipal track, we wouldn't have these beautiful gardens out in front. We wouldn't have some of the landscaping and the sculptures, and, you know, I think that the parking lot that we're talking about doing, keeping it natural, is going to, is going to add to our tract. And I think that those are the things we need to consider when we talk about the municipal tract as a whole, and, and be realistic about it. I, when this first was proposed by Alderman Colmier, I know I've had a lot of people tell me how ugly the Days of Allah part of our, of our tract is, and I know that there's been many people that have brought up the fire hazard. And I know that in our conversations last week and, and the, and the meeting prior to that, we talked to Bill and the staff and asked those questions of Chief Naughton, "Are these things that sound reasonable? Are these, could these be potential fire hazards?" And they were. And so I think that, that we have to look at those things, and I think we have to be realistic as leaders of this, of this city to do what is right. It doesn't mean there's development on the municipal track, the undeveloped part of the municipal track. It means we're doing things that, that make sense to keep it natural, but yet make it safe for all of our citizens, and the homeowners, and the people that, that back up to it. So I just wanted to, to clarify a few of those points, but I believe that, that these are reasonable things to, to consider.
Okay. Michelle?
Well, I've said this over and over again. I agree with Mike's assessment. I don't believe the core survey was a correct survey. And so, you know, the fact that some people stand by it, I do not. I get reelected by people who tell me to do something on the municipal track. That involves doing something now fire-wise-ish on the Days of Allah side. People are sick and tired of looking at how sloppy and overgrown it is, and again, commenting about how the cedars have taken over, and there is really no good ecosystem there. So I support that. I also support having some sort of pervious cover parking out there so that residents, when they come to events, don't have to worry about tripping over rocks and holes, and there's just no need for that. And if it's something that allows the water to go drain into the aquifer, then that's, that works for me. So one of the other things to discuss, though, is in the parking, as you may or may not have seen in the information that was provided, that the prices range on up to $50,000. So one of the things that I would like to ask is that the $16,000 that are currently remaining after what was recommended by Alderman Colmier be, remain in the Muni track. We may also need to add additional monies in order to complete that project. I'm willing to propose that at a later time, or we can use the initial money left in the Muni track as seed money to pursue the parking. Thank you.
And that, and that is one of the cost points that is provided in the materials for the polyurethane stretch grid?
Yes. Up to 50,000.
No, the, the next one is rigid plastic paver grid. There's two different, it's two different.
Well, there's 16,000 to 20, and 40 to 50.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So I don't know, I mean, we haven't discussed what options. Those are various impacts. We don't, we have, haven't discussed what's best for our city, have we?
No. I'd be glad to present that.
Yes.
Whenever you request.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mike?
I'm concerned that we're not including the, many of the citizens here. We've got a tree committee that we haven't asked for their input, and I think we need to do that. We've got a survey that's scheduled in November, I believe, on the municipal track for the town plan, where citizens have, are going to be specifically invited to provide their input, and for us to act before then seems a bit precipitous. I am, you know, a paratrooper and a historian. I don't know anything about statistics, but we hired a PhD in statistics and asked them to put together a survey. What little I know is that the, the response was statistically significant, even though there wasn't everyone participating. That rate of, of response is just amazing, and that was a comment by the lady that did the presentation. As far as a parking lot, we're talking about right now, a fairly significant expenditure of money for four events a year, which I'm not real sure is wise stewardship, because we've not yet, the, the events that I've been to, there hadn't been any problem finding parking and, and getting to the event. So I think that's a, a solution looking for a problem. So I think that we need to engage the citizens, specifically the tree committee, to tell us what, what, what they think. I certainly think we need a concerted effort to talk to the people on Elm Spring and Byway, and get them on record as to what they want, rather than telling them what we're going to do for them. So I, I don't, would not support the, this, the move into the, the natural area of the municipal track until we engage the citizens and hear what they have to say. I didn't raise any objection to the cutting of the trail back to the, to the wellhead because we needed to pull that well and, or pull that pump and, and replace it, and install the SCADA, and it was just impossible to do that by going through people's backyards. But I was, I, I just think we need to engage the, the citizens before we go any further on any of these. So I'm, I'm down with the, the electrical outlets. Got no problem with that.
Okay. So we have several items that are before us this evening. I'm going to see what kind of consensus we get on these items, and then we can decide.
I do, I do have a question.
Yes, Mary Ann. I'm sorry. I'll come back to you.
One, one question that I do have is, I guess now, given, given all this concern about fire, you know, we've, we've had some issues. I, I always tried to promote the city manager as the CEO, and he deals with his staff. So if there is a concern about the fire over there, I have a concern that Chief Naughton has never brought this to our attention. The city's been inception since 1956, is that correct? I think.
Yes.
And never once has, has the chief ever brought to our attention this dire need to address the new fire hazard that is now glaring at us from, from the Muni track. Look, I have been clear since I ran in 2014 that I like the, the Muni track as it is. Let's protect it as Heritage Greens says. I'm just one person up here. We can do whatever it is that the majority wants to do, and that is what we will do, because the majority makes the rule. And I don't, I have never, ever said that the survey was a majority. The only thing I've ever said is that it does have a 36% return rate for those folks that took the effort to tell us something, and those percentages came from the report. They weren't made up. 62% of the people that were asked, "What, if anything, do you want to do?", 62% said, "Leave it alone." Now, we can argue up here about what to do about that, or we can... Now, we can argue up here about what to do about that, or we can do something. But we have heard from residents, we spent over $35,000 for a feasibility study and a survey. If the majority doesn't want to listen to any of that, okay. I think this proposal, you know, looking at some of the comments that we received from emails, it does include infrastructure build-out in anticipation of some kind of future development. That's my impression. When you look at the rationale offered, fire, safety, it's easy to conclude that that's a pretext. So in 2017, let's look at keeping the city safe from all these fire hazards, and then in 2021, where do we put home plate? You know? That's what it seems like. Proposals shouldn't hide ambition. They should describe what the last step looks like. So if there's some kind of proposal here that the majority wants to make, make it! Don't put it in this and couch it in this safety issue, especially when nobody's even talked to anybody on Elm Spring or BikeWay about this fire break.
Actually, that's not quite true.
The other thing is, is that when we talk about issues related to needing to attract younger families, younger families keep moving here without anything currently in the Muni tract. So I can appreciate all points of view, and I want to hear it, and I feel like we have heard from residents, we spent tax dollars trying to get that information. And if this council wants to do something different, stand up and do it. But be clear about it. Be clear about it. Don't hide it behind this, "Oh, well, we've got a safety hazard and a fire hazard," when Chief Naughton has never come and said, "We need to deal with that." Okay.
Okay. I'm going to turn it back to Michelle. She wants to make a couple of comments.
First of all, young families I have moved into the city and sold homes to specifically have asked for why we don't have things at City Hall, why we don't have events, why we don't have a playscape, why we don't have things. And as for having discussed it, we have discussed it over the years, the fact that someone could drive on Days of Allah and throw a cigarette butt out the window and start a fire easily because of the underbrush. And as Mike Alderman Colmier mentioned, it has changed over years. It has gotten more and more overgrown. If you... The idea that you're accusing us of trying to do something as a majority when we're actually making recommendations to improve the tract is just not acceptable to me.
What I'm saying is that residents have told us via a survey that we spent tax dollars on what to do.
That survey was flawed.
If you don't agree with the survey and you think it's flawed...
Let her finish. You can come back.
Then what? You just want to throw it out?
Basically. Because the questions that were asked in that survey, as Mike brought up, were totally flawed. Why would we ask somebody a bunch of personal questions and what they do with charities and what they do with other stuff? None of that had anything to do with it. And the questions that were asked based on what was in the proposal that had been done were flawed. They made it... The questionnaire made it seem, along with what other residents sent out in mail, made it seem like the proposal was to spend $18 million doing everything all over the Muni tract, and that was never anything anyone had suggested.
So you're not interested in getting additional feedback and asking residents, "Sorry, we did a flawed survey. We'd really like your input. Let's do it again."
Okay, now we're discussing...
Are you interested in that at all?
Now we're debating the survey.
I have been doing that.
As opposed to...
You have been asking for an additional survey?
I have been asking for additional information from residents on a regular basis.
Okay, so do you...
Okay, now we're talking about a survey.
And my question is...
We're talking about a survey.
Sorry, Mayor. My question... We are talking about a survey.
We're talking about a survey. This is a budget meeting. We're not talking about the survey. That is...
I guess...
That survey is there. You've had many... Both of you have had ample opportunity to describe the survey this evening. I do want to have a couple of points before we come back in and look at the issues. The cost was $25,000, just as a point of correction. I believe...
For the... There was a $35,000 cost for a feasibility study and a survey.
The survey was $10,000. The feasibility study was 25.
Okay. Combined 30...
35.
I have spoken with citizens along BikeWay and Elm Spring. In fact, we have an email from one of them that's in tonight's package that we read into the record by unanimous consent. So there are people who have talked about this and have talked about it from a firewise standpoint who live on that street. As far as any plan that we're going to put together, we cannot put in stone any plan that goes into the future. Every city council can modify a plan. So when you tell us, "We would like..." When you indicate that, "I want to know where you're going to be in 2021," I don't know what's going to be on... I don't know who's going to be on council in 2021. The vision of every council is the consensus that the five of you reach from year to year to year. And, you know, fortunately, we have a great planning and zoning commission that has been very visionary for our community and has provided us as a community guidance. And the city councils have listened to those people over time because they represent the cross-section of our entire community. For any one of us to think that we know all of the answers is, I think, an overstatement of our knowledge and an overstatement of our power. We are making an incremental decision. The incremental decision is that Michelle tells us that people have told us that this is a fire hazard. She said that that has happened over the years. I don't know. I haven't been on council for but the last two years. I recognize the nature of the property. Environmentally, I would love to see nothing more on that property ever than a hiking trail, a nature trail.
Why do we keep talking... I guess I don't understand. Why do we keep... You know, we keep going back and forth at each other, and it's not a personal thing. Why don't we ask residents again if you don't like the survey? I mean, that's all I'm asking. It's not...
Bob, you have the floor.
So, since the surveys come out, I've been to every one of the events except for one, and I have talked to many residents that did not participate in the survey, didn't, weren't aware of it. Young families, older people that weren't aware of it, could not do the survey, did not do the survey, were completely clueless as to the survey, and yet they had very positive things to say about the city events, about the vision of the city and some of the things that were going on. The problem was, many of the residents, we don't go back into the survey, but there was a false pretense before that survey went out, and I'll leave it at that. But many, many of the people in the last several years since I've been elected, I've spoken to many, many people that have been very positive about what we're trying to do. So I think that we can't just rely on something that, you know, that happened a couple of years ago that, you know, I'll drop the survey altogether. But secondly, what I do also want to say is regards to the parking lot and the four events, I also participate. It's not just four events, Alderman Simpson. There are several more, too, which I participate in, which is the fun runs up here. And I can tell you, it's a really difficult situation when you have the Hobby Fund run and the Clark Fund run, and there's several other schools that do them as well. The traffic and the parking on Northwest Military and the amount of people that are running around City Hall is very dangerous. I know the police can attest to that. And to have the ability to put them over in a organized parking lot that is natural, I think, is a safety concern and a solution, a safety solution. I don't... We like to go back to these four city events that keep coming up, but there are more than four, and I think it's a very positive thing that we're looking at to do a parking lot. So I want to make sure that...
Mike, we also have, Bob, we also have court every month.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Can I rebut something here, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Just to go to the group before we continue to discuss the survey, if you have something other than the survey, does anybody want to continue? How many of you want to continue to discuss the survey? Mike?
I'm all for open discussion. I like it.
Okay. Michelle, do you want to keep discussing the survey?
I think we beat the dead horse.
Okay. Bob?
I don't have anything to say about it.
Is there any question? Is there any question?
Mary Ann, you would like to continue to discuss the survey?
No, no, no. I would like to make a statement.
Okay.
Is there any wonder that we cannot have a rational discussion in the community when we can't even have a reasonable discussion up here? I'm just...
Mary Ann...
My esteemed colleague, who I know well outside of our work up here and like a lot, we agree on a lot of things, and he has said that many, many, many people come to talk to him and state an opinion. Many, many, many people come and talk to me and state an opinion. We can sit up here and talk about that over and over and over. We paid money to get a survey. If nobody wants to talk about that anymore, that's fine, but why did we spend money on it? And if we're just going to go with many, many, many people talk to me about it, then why don't we ask residents once again?
Okay. Mike?
I think we've asked the residents... When did the survey go out? It was three years ago? It was 2015?
2015.
It's about three years ago, two years ago. So there's been two or three elections since then. Now, you want citizens' input? Michelle Ross has been elected twice in that time. She runs on a platform of developing the municipal tract or improving it. Bob Heinselman has been elected in that time, reelected in that time. He runs on a platform of improving and doing things at the municipal tract. I have been elected. I have run on the platform that, when I spoke to people that asked me about the municipal tract, I said, "It's a fire hazard." Everybody, with the exception of one person, agreed with me. And even he, and I have the email, that even I turned him to agreeing that it's possible to do some firewise work, and he was an Elm Springs resident. I was elected by a majority of the votes. The people have spoken. Every year, one or two candidates have run, and they have harped on that their platform is not to develop the municipal tract, and they have been defeated. I think the people have spoken. I think it's... I don't want to talk about the survey anymore. I think it's a done deal. It's a dead horse.
Okay. Let's proceed with the items that are listed. Do we have a consensus to do a shaded fire break, shaded fuel break? Mike said no.
Yes.
Michelle? Bob? Mary Ann?
Are we voting here?
No, we're reaching a consensus because that is the basis on which we can... Bill can prepare a budget. If we don't tell him what we're going to do by consensus, we're not taking any votes, but we're asking, is there a consensus to proceed with this as an item on the budget? Mike?
Absolutely.
Okay. Chainsaw class.
No.
No?
No.
No? Bob? Mary Ann?
No.
Mike?
No.
Okay. Water feature. Mike?
No.
Michelle?
Need more information.
Okay. Bob?
I'm in the same boat. I'm for it, but I'm not there yet, so I'll get more information on maintenance and costs.
Okay. Mary Ann?
No.
Mike?
I'll take the recommendation by the city manager, basically that they need to develop a little more information for costs.
Okay. Increased electrical capacity for City Hall. Mike?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Need more information.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Environmentally friendly parking. Mike?
No.
Michelle?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay. So now the issue is, how much is this going to cost? And what do we... How much is this going to cost? Are we going to allocate the $26,000 that is currently available for the development of the Muni tract as currently in the 2016, 2017 budget, or do we need a greater amount or a lesser amount? Mike, do you propose a greater amount or a lesser amount?
Lesser.
Michelle?
Greater.
Bob?
Greater.
Mary Ann?
No amount.
Mike? Okay. So we have estimates on the cost for these items. The estimate goes as high as $50,000. We have 26 currently on the budget, and we have a fund surplus of 20, almost $25,000, which is roughly $50,000. We're now discussing how much of that we would like to include. Do we want to turn back... Do we want to turn... Do we want it to be... Mike, do you have a recommendation?
Mayor, maybe I should run through some of the options there because...
Okay, great.
Again, there was kind of three options in consultation with the engineers, and even essentially the email, I mean, they had an architectural engineer, they had a whole bunch of subject matter experts that do this stuff that came from San Antonio River Authority. So you can go on the cheap to use your existing rock surface and then maybe add some minimal topsoil and delineate the parking area using some sort of bricks or railroad ties. Because the problem now is that you don't have it delineated. Even if you rope it out, it's just not an efficient use of... Could you go back, please? Use of the area. People don't park efficiently and so forth, and you get clogged in. So that's possible, but that's hard to do. There was the... What about a formidable structure base, which you could use plastic pavers or gravel, which is... There's some interesting ways to do that. We did a little research on that. I'm not going to say that we've done a complete amount of research on that. And then to get a grant, you'd have to do a paved parking lot with curbs and then have permitable structure, and then that's completely... Never has been the intent of council, and that would defeat the purpose of what we're trying to do there. So that's thrown out, and that would be... What I really thought, I mean, when I saw the presentation by Sarah, they had this formidable stuff that grass growing out of it, you could barely see it was a parking lot. And so it looked interesting to me. That's why I pursued it. So if you go to the next slide, this is something similar that will be done next to the Bader House. The Bader House is that assisted living facility, and they didn't have a fire lane that was to standard, and Chief Naughton wouldn't approve a fire lane associated with that. So what he did approve was, you've got a curve cut in here, and then what you have is you have all these plastic pavers in here with topsoil, and you have bricks that had been outlined in here, and that's actually heavy-duty and... I don't know what the tonnage allows, but allows for a parking lot to go, I mean, a firing to go right in there. That's another example of where you might have added gravel on it. I don't think that's the intent of what you would want. That would be environmental friendly, but that's harder to maintain, but it's an example. If you could flip forward a couple of slides, please. I should have put it this way. Go forward more. Where's the one that I have beside? You don't have... Okay. In your pack... That's all the slides you have?
I don't think we have.
Okay. Go back. The cheapest version I found just on, you know, a couple hours' worth of research is this metal thing that probably comes in sheets, and you have to expand it. And I thought it was pretty good until I started looking at it. Requires you to stake, put stakes down there pretty deep. We know that that would be almost impossible with our rock base. And then with the illustrated demonstration here is with gravel, you could put topsoil in there, and it would grow through permeable, but you have a hard time marking it. So it almost defeats the purpose. You already have a surface there that exists that's kind of rock-based with some grass, and it's not like when you drive on it, you sink. You don't. The challenge is you just can't... You're just inefficiently parking based upon what's going on. So I really thought that might be a really good option, but when I'm looking at it, it's hard to mark, harder to do than I thought. And it's the cheapest version, and you could probably do that between, you know, $10,000 and $20,000. The next one is the stuff that you lay in. You can get two-inch, you can get four-inch, you can get six-inch. The two-inch is probably all we would need. The beauty behind that is you could put topsoil on top of it, and then you could... Each one of these things, you can put caps on it, and these are plastic caps that would go on there, and you would have grass growing through, but you would have some sort of marking of a parking area. And so that was the option three there, associated with what realistically you can do. For the purpose of this, the only reason why I, you know, first of all, I wouldn't have brought it up except for the opportunity and the visit we just had recently. It is one of the objectives that you have under the infrastructure, which is to implement friendly parking solution, options. So if you've changed it to implement this year, which is more than consider, which means to implement it, you've got to have funds. So if we don't want to do that, you can change that in terms of that, but if you want to implement it, then you have to fund it. So there's two ways to do that. So there's two ways to do that. You can either just say, "Come back with options, and we'll amend, amend the budget next year," you know, after we do it, or you can put a placeholder in there with an amount, and then I can come up with options, because I'm still have to bring it back to council for approval regardless. And I think that's, that would be the same for the electricity. I, I would, I believe, well, I probably wouldn't have to do that, it's less than twenty-five thousand dollars. But this would require council approval associated with that. So if I budgeted the electricity that would, for ten thousand, as long as I implemented it within that budget, I could do that based upon the budget. You currently have a, you don't, you don't have a goal or an objective that implements the fire break. I'd ask you if you're going to do that, that we, we, we would probably put an objective in here that says, "Implement fire break." And then you can approve it or disapprove it, but you need to take action on it with a, with a budget. And with the environmental friendly, it's, it's either conceptually, I've got conceptual consensus, and I can put any amount in, in the budget. Right now, you have the twenty-six thousand. If you use ten thousand for electric, that leaves sixteen thousand. There's, as, as mentioned, there's the added revenue we're going to get from, assuming that you get a hundred percent. That money can be used to reduce the amount of fund balance that we're going to use for capital replacement funds, or it could be, I'm just thinking where else I would go for the environmental friendly parking. That would be one area, and you might need to put another ten thousand allocated in there for environmental parking. I don't know, did I miss something, Laura? That, I, you know, we haven't prepared any action for that. All the other actions that you've, you've provided guidance to is we've got consensus, we've, we've got a budget prepared. I think we've, we can easily do the, the ten thousand for electric, and then just whatever your general guidance is here on this environmental parking. Again, if you can put it in the budget, I still have to come back to the council for approval.
Okay, Michelle?
I would suggest we put the hundred percent extra property tax collection of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and fourteen into the municipal track, along with the existing twenty-six thousand to cover costs for electric and parking.
And add an objective in the budget for fire break.
Yes.
Okay. Mike, do you support that or oppose it?
No. I'd like to speak to it.
Okay. Yes, please.
I'm trying to get out of my army terminology here of where we're pulling these numbers out of. I think it's grotesquely irresponsible to take the, the money that we've identified by changing our expected revenue in tax collection, at the alarm tax collection, when the number one thing that everyone has spoken about in every survey that I've seen is drainage, and we've got nothing done. I, I understand, we got us, we, we paid them fifty thousand dollars, but I haven't seen a dang thing, and there's nothing to put into the budget on drainage, other than a placeholder, which is what we had last year. And to take this extra money and spend it on something when we have a, a consistently identified problem of drainage is irresponsible, and it will cause me to vote no on the budget.
Thank you, Mike. Now, I, I believe that we have impact fees that have been paid to the city that are somewhere in excess of a million dollars, Mike. And, and so there, there is money, but it's, we're not, we're not funding out of current reserves, we're funding out of our, out of our long-term reserves, impact fees to pay for that. Now, y'all can pay for...
No, Mr. Mayor, it was not impact fees, it was excess collections. It was the, the overages of one point six million dollars that was identified lying around in the, in the general fund.
Yeah.
And where they came, I've got the floor. Where they came from, you can argue. But the point is, we have, I, we, the grossest identifications is, much more than that is, is going to be required to fix our drainage problems. And then you add on to that the drainage, the problems that we're going to have with the Northwest Military expansion. To, to willy-nilly spend this money is, to me, very irresponsible.
Thank you, Mike. Bill, I'm going to let you address that.
Well, I am getting, we are getting a brief from KFW Thursday, and then they will be presenting on six September, the initial plan to the P and Z. So just, that's the status report. But I'm going to say at least...
But we're building the budget now.
Mike, Mike, Bill has the floor.
At least fifty percent of the capital replacement fund did come from excess fund balance. I don't know the exact number, but a large amount of that did come, primarily fueled by sales tax. A lot of it, recently, we have a development fee that's associated, it's, it's, it's not an impact fee, but it's a development fee that we've been collecting for when they plat, and that also goes to drains. We're slow, but that's, so that's, that's that piece. And there were some also before in the capital replacement. Just, there's probably three sources of income that have built that up to about one point two million. We don't, one point four? We don't know what the costs are going to be, but I, just, just so we're clear, it's probably going to be more than one point four to, to fix all those, and we're going to have to prioritize once that comes.
And we can discuss the impact fee at some future point. Okay. Bob, that comes to you, as far as Michelle's comment to set aside the entire fund for the municipal track issues as they relate to electrical, fire wise, and...
Parking.
Parking.
I'm in favor of that.
Okay. Mary Ann?
No, sir.
Okay. Mike?
I propose this to just go with the twenty-six thousand dollars from the municipal track. All this has gotten kind of out of hand. I, I think I'd have to have more information on everything before I would rec, before I would go with putting any more money into it.
Okay. So, yeah. So we have two noes, two at fifty, roughly fifty-one, and one at twenty-six. Is there a consensus at twenty-six? Mike?
No.
Mary Ann?
Did you already ask everybody else?
No, I asked you.
Oh, no.
Okay.
That's fine, I'll go with twenty-six, and when we get more information, I thought we had enough budget information, but if we get more information, we'll come back and amend the budget.
Okay. Bob?
I'm in favor.
Okay. So there is nothing to return back. The use of the extra money, the natural place to go is to the capital replacement fund for the funds that have been taken from there. Do we have any place else that people would like to allocate the twenty, the projected revenue increase, revenues over expenses of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars?
So Mayor, just a point.
Yes.
You know, it's almost a wash anyway, right? So we're using excess fund balance to fund the capital replacement fund. If I was given your, there's not, partially, partially, yes, I'm sorry. I can't remember the exact amount, but it's a partial amount of that. We're using excess fund balance to do that. To give you the most flexibility, if we just reduce, if we use that money and we just reduce the amount that's going to fund the capital replacement fund, it's going to stay in fund balance, and then when we see what these projects are and the cost, it'll be sitting in fund balance, and you can allocate money to drainage, or wherever you want to do, to public works, fire, police, whatever.
Okay. So, so Bill, is that your recommendation to the council members?
Well, what? We're doing the electric.
Out of...
Out of the twenty-six thousand.
Out of the district.
And then, well, no, my understanding was, they said twenty-six, you gain twenty-six to allocate for electrical and environmental friendly parking.
And, yes.
And that the...
So the numbers don't change from what the current budget?
The numbers don't change, but you want a, you want it allocated towards something.
And the plan, it's a plan toward environmental friendly, environmental friendly parking.
Right, which, you know, if you go option one, which is bricks and railroad, you could probably do it for that.
Yeah. Okay.
And then the other part of S X collections, my recommendation, we just park it in fund balance now, because what it's really going to do is it's going to reduce the transfer in fund balance. Right now? What? You have seventy-six thousand in fund balance that you're going to transfer into capital. This would reduce that amount of, that you're transferring from fund balance into capital. It still fully funds capital, but it's just, it's kind of a wash, if that makes sense, because you're...
Okay. So is that your recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Mike, you wanted to say something?
I thought we had used this excess fund balance to buy a crack seal machine this year. Was I confused on that? That, that, I thought that's where we identified the money coming from.
So we, we did, we are using excess fund balance to do this crack seal machine, but before we got to that point, the budget that was presented by, by, with the city manager in order to fully fund capital, we had to use seventy-four thousand, not seventy-six, sorry, seventy-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine from fund balance to fully fund all of the capital for the current year. So, yeah.
Is there a consensus to follow the recommendation of the city manager? Mike?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
And what is the, the recommendation? I'm sorry. It wasn't clear to me.
Well, you've told me to specifically allocate the twenty-six thousand towards the electrical, and then what I think a proposed environmental friendly, which we're going to have to come back and visit later.